Buenas noches a todos. Creo que se van a deshacer de la sesión cerrada muy pronto. Mientras esperamos, si nos puede gustar, que los interpreters hagan su declaración de interpretación.
Buenas noches. En un momento se activará la función de interpretación de Zoom y todos deberán escoger su idioma de preferencia, inglés o español, incluso los presentadores y las personas bilingües. Por favor, haga clic en el globo ubicado en el padéncio de Zoom y seleccione su idioma. Gracias por su cooperación.
Buenas noches. La función de interpretación se activará en un momento y todos en esta reunión deben seleccionar su idioma de preferencia, inglés o español, incluyendo a los presentadores y personas bilingües. Por favor, clic en el globo en el panel de la función de Zoom y seleccione su idioma. Gracias por su cooperación.
Buenas noches a todos. Bienvenidos a la reunión de la Consejera de Educación del primer de mayo de SMUUSD. Me gustaría, antes de empezar, dar un muy grande agradecimiento a Carrie Upton y Isaac y Adam por darnos una vuelta de la hermosa nueva escuela que queremos abrir muy pronto para el próximo año escolar. Fue increíble. Qué facilidad. Qué trabajo. Gracias. Empezaremos con un rollo.
Recorrida en progreso.
Oh, recorrida en progreso. Lo siento, ¿debo empezar de nuevo? Okay. Pensé que estábamos en progreso. Haremos un rollo. Stacy. Aquí. Haley.
Aquí.
Richard.
Aquí.
María.
Aquí.
Lori.
Aquí.
Alicia.
Aquí.
Y John Keane está ausente esta noche y yo estoy aquí. Así que ahí está nuestro rollo. Haremos el Pledge of Allegiance. Vamos a todos a sentarnos y hacerlo juntos. Okay, vamos a pasar a la aprobación de la agenda. ¿Alguien tiene algún cambio en la agenda? Okay. ¿Tenemos un motion para aprobar la agenda? Lori hace el motion. ¿Hay un segundo? Stacy, segundos. Haremos un rollo. Stacy.
Sí.
Haley.
Sí.
Alicia.
Sí.
Richard.
Sí.
María.
Sí.
Lori.
Sí.
Y yo sí. Y lo siento mucho. No hice esto para nuestro rollo, pero Ella.
¡Hola, soy yo!
Oh, ahí estás. ¡Lo siento mucho! Lo siento mucho. Y así, aprobación de la agenda. ¿Podemos tener su voto?
Sí.
Okay, genial. Gracias. Lo siento mucho. Ella está en Zoom con nosotros. Oh, sí. No, no. Así que sí, ella está en Zoom con nosotros. Así que... Okay. Y así la agregaremos al rollo. ¿Okay, Sarah? Aprobación de los minutos. ¿Podemos tomarlos juntos?
Así es.
Richard los mueve juntos. María, segundos. Haremos un rollo. Stacy.
Sí.
Haley.
Sí.
Alicia.
Sí.
Richard.
Sí.
María.
Sí.
Lori.
Sí.
Yo sí. Y Ella.
Sí.
Gracias. Pasaremos a la Consejera de Educación, Comendaciones y Reconocimientos. Estudiantes de la escuela de Malibu y presentación de la escuela de Malibu. Genial. Bienvenidos.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Adam Almeida. Soy el director de la escuela de Malibu y es mi placer traer a la mesa dos de nuestros estudiantes increíbles. Los reconocemos por sus grandes esfuerzos y apoyo a no solo nuestra comunidad escolar, sino a nuestra comunidad mayoritaria, ayudando a las familias y estudiantes después de las incendios de Palisade. Así que me gustaría traerlos a la mesa para que puedan presentarse y contarles un poco sobre su proyecto.
Hola, mi nombre es Ryland Barres. Mi nombre es Ryland Barres. Soy una tercera de la escuela de Malibu y solo quiero decirles gracias por invitarme aquí. Si no sabes de la Sala de Malibu, es algo creado por Katherine Brickman. Así que gracias a ella porque hizo todo esto. Pero comencé como voluntaria allí. Es para las familias o para los estudiantes afectados por los incendios que vayan a comprar y conseguir tantas cosas como quieran. Y comencé como voluntaria y todos llegamos con la idea de crear un evento de esto y recaudar dinero de la escuela de Malibu creando un evento de tráfico, que también me encanta la moda. Así que fue honestamente muy divertido para mí y fue una gran manera para que la comunidad se uniera y fue un evento realmente increíble. Oh, una cosa más. Quería decirles gracias al Club de Raquetas de Malibu también por encajar todo el precio que hicimos para donar también al equipo de tenis de la escuela de Malibu y al Centro de Cerámica. Gracias.
Hola a todos. Oh. Oh, mierda. Hola. Soy Levi Barres y soy tercera de la escuela de Malibu. Y sí, fue genial porque tenía amigos que eran realmente afectados por los incendios y no tenían nada. Así que fue genial verlos todos disfrutando, encontrando cosas y fue un gran evento y todo.
Gracias. Eso es un trabajo increíble. Oh, tenemos algunos certificados.
Sí, definitivamente tenemos certificados. Y solo queremos agradecerles por todos sus esfuerzos en ayudar a nuestra comunidad. Esto es solo una pequeña representación de los estudiantes increíbles que tenemos en la escuela de Malibu. Así que gracias, Ryland, y gracias, Levi.
Sí. Yes. All right. Amazing, thank you so much. Not surprising, but amazing. So, but now we get to hear about Santa Monica High School. I'm sorry, Malibu High School, because here we are in Malibu. Sorry.
No worries. You just made me just a little nervous when I was like, ooh, okay.
Yes, yeah, switch jobs.
Yeah, I can put something together.
Here we go.
Before we do get started, we did have another student to honor, and that was Elizabeth Lulu. And fortunately, she wasn't able to make it. She's part of the band, and they have a dress rehearsal tonight for our musical that opens tomorrow.
Oh.
So she started Kits for Kids.
Oh, okay.
And again, it was to support students with, lost their homes with clothing and basic needs. So we did want to, I did want to recognize her as well, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah, not a problem. So I guess it's my turn then to talk about Malibu High School. So again, for those of you who may not know me, maybe on Zoom, I'm Adam Almeida. I'm the assistant principal at, the principal, principal at Malibu High School.
I don't feel so bad now.
That's right. I was thinking, I was thinking Santa Monica High School, so I was like, well, I know I'm not the principal there, so. And I read my assistant principal's name there too, so. My assistant principal is Denise Johnson, and so unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it, but we're happy to host and to talk. So some of the things that I wanted to talk about, and I was told that my clicker would work, but... There it is, never mind. So what I wanted to talk about is some of our celebrations and how it relates to instruction, academics, and so on and so forth. So first, I wanted to start with our academic excellence and student support. One thing I wanted to highlight was our peer tutoring that we're getting off the ground and organizing. And so really, it's for students who have good grades in their classes, As and Bs, supporting lower grades. And we wanna be able to make that from obviously seniors to juniors and juniors to sophomores, but also freshmen to eighth grade. And having the luxury of being on campus with, sharing a campus with middle school, it gives us that opportunity to kind of continue that. So we're definitely excited about that program and looking forward to getting it off the ground, providing community service hours for our students as well. And also highlighting, as part of the celebrations, our continued collaboration with our middle school. Mr. Schellenberg and I have been in constant communication about getting our high school programs to spill into our middle school so that we not only can promote those skills moving forward for our high schoolers, but then also be attractive to those who are in our community who are considering maybe going to another school, but to be able to see these things from middle school on into high school. Another celebration is our yearbook course. Prior to this year, our yearbook course was not A through G approved, and this year it is now approved as an A through G class through College Board. And so it's just supporting more college readiness for our students in all academic programs. And the last thing in this category that I'd like to highlight is myself, my assistant principal, and our two counselors went into classrooms and met with all of our juniors leading up to our standardized test. We talked about how these tests not only impacted them individually, impacted their peers, but impacted the school as well. And so we hope that that yields some success when it comes to our state scores. Those haven't come out yet, but we've completed our testing, and we look forward to seeing whether or not those had sort of any impact. I also wanted to highlight some of our arts programs, in particular, our Advanced Photo that participated with the City of Malibu in the publication of their rec guides. Our students participated in Frames of Nature art show that was exclusively at City Hall for our students, and they were also able to visit the Agelston exhibit that was curated by Malibu alumni. For visual arts, we just hosted this past Tuesday our second annual visual arts show, which was a great success. We still have those items up, and some of you who visited the school today and came through the front office, they were there and displayed in the front office, so we're very proud of those. And another thing that we're looking to continue and grow is having talks for our students. So our film courses hosted two prominent movie producers and writers that were able to answer questions for our students, support them in their journey and their exploration of film studies. And so it was a great success to have them come in and speak to our students. And finally, some academic achievements. In our fall season, our football team made the playoffs, which is amazing for us. We were super excited for eight-man football and playoffs. Our winter sports and spring sports had very successful seasons with high participation rates, which is amazing for us as well. And the highlight so far for our athletics is our girls CIF tennis team. They won Division VII championship for tennis this year. And we were first scheduled to play at Claremont Colleges. It rained as though it never rained before, and so we were able to reschedule it and win our CIF match at Samo High School. So that was very special. So we're very proud of them. And our student that was here earlier, Ryland, was also a member of our tennis team as well. So she is a CIF champion. So excellent. Now, kind of going along with that theme of celebrations, our site implementation plan, when I arrived this year, it was very robust, and it was a menu of things. And with our site leadership team, we decided to create a little more focus in those plans. And so we came up with a term called Partner Plus. And so really, it was our teachers focusing on creating partners and questioning and engagement strategies for our students. And so with the creation of that plan and a little more narrow focus, we hosted four learning walks, two with our site leadership team, one with our district cohort that we're working with professional development. And on Tuesday, we had an entire school staff learning walk where everyone, all of our teachers participated during their prep periods to visit at least three other classrooms amongst their colleagues to be able to see all of the great work that they're doing. So what I did is compile notes from all of those walkthroughs and highlight some of the important things that came from those. And first was around student engagement and classroom excellence. So for the most part, our classes are warm, safe, our classrooms are student-centered. We supported student talk with discussions in academic language and use of the content language within each course, and it was visibly clear that students were engaged in their own learning. There were high levels of participation in partnerships and in groups, and they were confidently, very articulate and very thoughtful with, again, their academic language. To also highlight, we also wanted to highlight student voice and depth and student agency. So students within those lessons and within those walkthroughs were given choice with the activities that they were doing. They were challenged by the questioning their teachers posed and by each other. And really, the teachers then used targeted questioning to kind of push learning and create a deeper understanding for our students. And so I created a little graph of the DOK levels there, and those are the number of times that we saw each of those skills being used in our classroom. So from DOK level one, which is recall and reproduction, all the way to four. And obviously, our goal is to expand extended thinking for our students in all lessons. The other thing I wanted to highlight, and when I came in as principal, I met with all of the teachers, and there was a common theme of attendance, a common theme of a culture that they wanted to create that promoted being on time, being in school, and being there with regularity, so that we can create a more, a solid academic foundation. And so what we decided to do was not only be clear with our expectations, but then hold students accountable for those things. So with support, and the support is, obviously, students have a lot of choice, and students could potentially get lost when they're making those choices. And so from August and into late September, we had anywhere between 50, and in September, late September, down to 25 cuts on average during our support periods. From February to April, amongst all classes, not just support, we've only had, we averaged about 12. So we reduced that tremendously by being consistent and being, and holding students accountable for what our expectations were. And regularly having meetings with students to kind of discuss these importance, the important things, me attending, obviously, our PTSA meetings to highlight those with our parents, and sending messaging out that this is what we're doing, and these were our expectations. So we made some great progress there in school attendance. The same thing for tardies. From August to September, we averaged about 30, sorry, 46 tardies a week, down to, in the last, from February to April, to 19. And so we're very proud of these numbers and very proud of our students for meeting our expectations. And currently now, 90% of all of our students at Malibu High School have less than three tardies. And so with the support of our PTSA, who, we pitched this idea, and now obviously they recognize the importance of this, they help provide attendance awards. So not only do we have Student of the Month awards, but we have attendance awards that we also highlight students who are making these improvements. So very proud of our efforts in that regards. And again, I just created another graphic to show the downward trend of the, of the thing, you know, so visual learners. That's right. This one is super fancy, straight line graph that just goes down. So moving forward, I mean, we have, we have basically three things that we wanna continue to highlight, and one is improving student responsibility and student accountability. So students taking ownership, which they have, and so we're very proud of that. We also wanna change the culture of our academic engagement, and I think we're making that progress in our regular PDs with our staff, where we're talking about student engagement, we're talking about depth of knowledge, and there's this agreement of moving forward and growing as a staff collectively. And again, that helps us to unify as a staff, to grow, to implement school-wide instructional practices that we all feel comfortable with and that we're all learning and supporting each other with. And so it's setting high expectations for our students, and our students are definitely meeting those high expectations. So looking ahead, we wanna continue to collaborate, to celebrate our collaboration. We wanna continue to create student leadership opportunities and ownership from our students, and we wanna be able to support staff in new questioning strategies to develop a deeper academic understanding and deeper academic discourse. And as was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we continue to move forward with construction. At the time of this presentation, those were the things that they were working on, but those change honestly from day to day. And so we definitely have regular walkthroughs, myself and our office staff walk through there, and I didn't put the silly picture just because my eyes were closed, but that was the best picture that I could find, so I added that. But we're very excited about the possibility of moving into our new facilities sooner than later. So thank you again for all of your willingness to come see the new place. We're very proud of it. And finally, what I would like to highlight is we had a very successful open house. We were outside, our community came, we had definitely representatives for our local community that supported our open house, and so we're very proud for that partnership and for a continued partnership for the Malibu Ed Foundation with our PTSA and their support for everything that, every idea that we've been pitching so far this year, and our continued collaboration with our Malibu Safety Committee. So that's everything I have to share with you, and I hope, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
That's amazing. Thank you so much. And Dr. Schilton, I was just wondering if Mr. Almeida got to share his success about the tardies and the absences with his other principals and share strategies and all of that kind of stuff? Because, I mean, we struggle with that all the time, all the schools do. They're always looking for innovative, new ways to figure out that, you know, how to get those kids in those seats.
Yeah.
I think it's something that we can work with, Ed Services, to make sure that you share, because I love the line, simplicity, down, going down. Keep up the good work. Seriously.
I was a little worried about that chart, but that's what I put it. Yeah, yeah.
Anybody have, anyone, yeah, Alicia? Yeah.
Yes, and I do, and I wanna ask about our multilingual learners. I know that in Malibu, I wanna ask about the SEAL of Bili literacy. You're at the high school, and I think that's a big celebration, and if you can share with us how many students are eligible for that and how you support multilingual learners here in, at Malibu High School.
Yeah, no, it's a great program, and honestly, our World Language Program is one of our strongest, and so we're very proud of our World Language Days and everything that they do to support multilingual learners. This year, we have 15 students who have, are receiving the SEAL, the Bili literacy SEAL. We have 12 of them in Spanish and three of them in French. And so ultimately, what we're doing is, especially for our multilingualers and even for our EL students, we're supporting them with, we have an EL teacher that checks in with them regularly. We have our bilingual liaison that checks in with our families, and we, weekly, we have our admin meeting. And biweekly, we have regular check-ins as a group. The group is not only the administrators, but all the, our counselors, the middle school and high school counselors. And we check in with individual students to kind of see where they're at. We check on grades, we check on socio-emotional learning, and any sort of information that all of us know so that we can kind of collaborate to better support them. And so it's definitely something that I'm very proud of, the collaboration that we have, not only amongst, within the staff in high school, but then through the middle school as well. Because of a lot of our families, I mean, if there's a high schooler, we have a middle schooler as well, who's experienced the same sort of things or in the same family. So we definitely try to collaborate so that we can better support them. So those are just a couple of those aspects. But yeah, we then check in with, all of our students receive support through their English class as well, and so we check in with our English department, Language Arts Department to make sure. And so we check in with our English department, Language Arts Department, to make sure that they're getting the support they needed to kind of move forward.
Great, thank you for sharing that. And I also want to say that I was very happy to see the peer-to-peer tutoring.
Yes.
I think that's a really effective strategy, because sometimes our students can put things in a way that's more understandable to other students. And tutoring, you know, it's good for the student who's doing the tutoring, because they get to develop their skills, and also for the student who's getting the tutoring.
Yes.
It's wonderful to see that here. But thank you for everything that you're doing, and we're glad you're here at Malibu High School.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And for support class, I may, my kids did that, but it may have changed in the last few years. So is that typically their home room class, and then they can choose to go to another place? It sounds like you've changed it a little bit. It's, I would, I would love to hear just briefly.
Yeah, so it's not necessarily a home room class. It's, we try to utilize it as support. So they do have a home base that they're assigned to. But we sort of borrowed the program that Santa Monica High School uses, enriching students, where we then, we can, we can propose, like, for example, if a student, we have AP tests coming along. So our teacher, our AP teachers will say, we're doing an AP review on Wednesday during support. So then students, then in that AP class, will sign up for that, and then go to that class as that. And then we'll take roll through enriching students. And so it'll fluctuate. Sometimes, for the most part, it's academic based. Every so often, it can be social based as well, like, hey, today, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a hike, or we're gonna do yoga in the quad, those kind of things. So different opportunities for our students, so that they can get the support that they need. But for the most part, it's academic based. And our goal for next year is to be even more intentional with support, so that we can create a mini little schedule. So we, we don't, we give opportunities for all teachers. So if I'm in one AP class, and there's two sessions happening at the same time, we want to be able to coordinate, so that the students can manage that. And if one case, and if not, then maybe we're in a larger space, where the students can then go back and forth, and whether that's, you know, our library, or whether that's the gym, maybe a little too large, but different spaces that we can then incorporate a larger group to kind of manage both. But no, it's definitely academic support that we seek. Yeah.
And the Frames of Nature thing you mentioned, that's actually out here, and it's out here through tomorrow, so you guys can see it if you haven't already.
Nice.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming and being here and presenting.
No, thank you.
I just want to say you're doing a great job, and thank you for incorporating the school site plan in a way that supports the needs of our students and our teachers with professional development and guidance that we talked about as you started. And I just want to tell you, we're proud and we're excited for the future of Malibu High School, specifically as you transition to the new space and implement some of the goals that we have established around project-based learning, CTE, and everything else that we've discussed moving forward. Thank you so much, Adam.
Thank you, and thank you for all the support that you and Mr. Burgess always give. So thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public comments for items listed on the agenda. Lori, do we have any in-house? Do we know?
We have no public comments, either online or here.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to our study session, our PBL implementation plan. Dr. Williamson?
Good evening, Board President Smith, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Shelton, Cabinet members and audience. Project-based learning has been a district commitment since 2018. Back when it started, a committee of administrators, teachers, board members, executive leadership, and it was co-chaired by Dr. Devon Smith, and a community member gathered data from student interest, site visits, and other points of research, and then made recommendations for implementation. Based on those recommendations, the board changed Ed Services to purpose, to pursue a deep and wide approach to providing PBL opportunities for students. The goal was to create an opportunity for high school students to learn through a primarily project-based curriculum, which is a deep approach, but to also provide professional development for all educators in SMMUSD. Tonight, Dr. Devon Smith will deliver his annual update on the progress of PBL implementation in the district. In the last year, our PBL efforts have gained considerable momentum, with entire sites focusing on PBL design and facilitation, while the PBL pathway is completing its first year on the Samo High campus. As a result, he will highlight key achievements, as well as share plans for the 2526 school year. Dr. Smith, please welcome.
All right, thank you. There we go. Hear me all right? All right, greetings, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Shelton, Cabinet, public viewers. My name is Dr. Devon Smith, Coordinator of Learning and Innovation. I'm pleased to share this annual update with you regarding the progress of PBL training and implementation in the district. This should be a little different than all the other updates that I've done in the past years, because things are really, really, really taking off. We've got some great momentum I'm so excited to share with you. And not only that, I'm just so happy to say that it's not just training and things that are coming from my desk or our small department, but really, it's taking root, and that momentum is seen, and I plan on sharing that with you and celebrating that tonight. So, let's see. Presentation? Oh. Bam. There we go. As an overview, I'm going to be providing some contextual information about PBL, then sharing some highlights or achievements from this year, and then sharing what our plans are for next year. So as you know, this part of our journey began in 2018 with the board's direction for the establishment of a secondary pathway now known as the Samo High PBL Pathway, also to create high-tech career-focused labs now known as the Samo High Academies, system improvement toward high-quality CTE pathways, and then the provision of professional development on project-based learning throughout the district. Now, last month, on April 3rd, I updated the board on CTE and the academies, those middle two. But tonight, I'm going to be giving you an update on our professional development efforts and the great work happening at the Samo High PBL Pathway. So I'll first begin with our district-wide PBL, and then transition over to news about the pathway. First, just as an overview of just these achievements, we're so proud of our professional development. We've centered around design and delivery for about 105 staff already this year. That would be teachers, coaches, and administrators. We're leveraging our amazing instructional coaches, so it's not just me, their boots on the ground, helping to build capacity as well. And then we're approaching our professional development as a project in and of itself for each one of our modules. So we start with how can we create assessment that's aligned to project-based learning? How can we help students to be better collaborators? Things like that. Also, we've had some amazing conferences and staff visitations and training and things like that. In June, we were able to take Grant PBL Leadership Committee members, and also our Franklin Principal, and our coaches, oh, actually, we didn't get the coaches, but we went to a coaching session, and I plan on bringing the coaches this next year. And also, one of the sessions called PBL 101. And that is also followed up by our fantastic experience just a couple months ago down in San Diego for our deeper learning with High Tech High. We were able to take our coaches down there, and that was phenomenal as well. You'll hear more about that later on. And then we had Smash and Grant do kind of a visitation exchange, where they observed each other and gave incredible feedback and gained inspiration from one another. And you'll be hearing about that as well. Oops, need to go back. Also, we've had some amazing celebrations, and we're having exhibitions that are coming up. Just to give you a preview, I'm going to talk about it again in our slides, but this year, for all of our sites, it's really about teacher learning for year ones. I'll talk more about that. And so you're going to be hearing about some great exhibitions that are coming up, probably during open houses, and I hope that you're able to come out and see what these projects are about. They're pretty amazing. And then finally, as just an area I want to highlight, our instructional impact has been noticeable. Academies have integrated curriculum with project-based approach. Our Career Day sessions are being augmented and/or transformed through our six Cs. Teachers are designing with more real-world opportunities for students through mentors, experts, partners, visits, and then students are experiencing higher degree of engagement and joy in learning. So as an innovative PD, professional development approach, Ed Services has organized professional development wheels, where schools will receive training in a rotation. And I know that the board has heard about this through the priorities. This is a three-year cycle. And as anticipated, this has allowed the training in PBL design and delivery to be broader in reach and deeper in effectiveness. Prior to this year, teachers elected to be part of a district-wide PBL cohort, which was great, but these teachers were excited to join it, but then only to find out how challenging it was for them to practice it in isolation, because they didn't have a partner at their site, and it wasn't being done as a school focus, nor as perhaps a grade-level focus. So even though they were excited, it was challenging for them to do it because of the other competing priorities. So now, we've got entire school sites involved, where the principals are providing that leadership and support. So now the momentum is really, really taking off. As you could see on the slide, we had 126 trained all the way up until last year. And then there's attrition, teachers leave the district, we have new that come in. But already this year, we've trained over 100, and that's just because of what I just described. That leadership and at the site level is making a difference, and we're able to train more deeply and effectively. So I'm really excited about that change. Here's a list of our modules, just so that you know, they have an intro to PBL, we get into the design, we align our assessments, there's deep work in collaboration, critique and revision, managing the project, and then the exhibitions that come along with that. And then, of course, coaching and support sessions that go on with the, with the super help of our instructional coaches. All right. Now, you're going to hear from our instructional coaches, which have been super, super helpful in various videos, but let me just share. We strive to deliver professional development in the form of the project itself. The goal is for teachers to learn through the experience of doing, rather than through a sit-and-get format. In the pictures here, you see teachers engaged in a brief project exhibition as part of their intro to PBL session. The other shows teachers participating in a collaborative activity designed to empower student voice and foster greater inclusion. We also know that our professional development is best followed up with sustained coaching. And so here to discuss this, here on video, is one of our amazing instructional coaches, And if you could read lips, it would be amazing. Pardon the technical difficulty? We'll start it over. We just have to hit the.
This year, I've had the privilege of partnering with Dr. Smith to lead the year-one foundational project-based learning trainings. As part of this work, I'm currently collaborating with Mayestra Mahia, a fourth-grade teacher at Edison. Her driving question, how can identifying patterns and using AI help us understand homelessness and work toward justice for those affected in Santa Monica? Throughout the year, we have met regularly to plan and refine this complex unit. The professional development provided her with the tools to design the unit, foster collaboration in her classroom, and select a complexity level appropriate for her first unit. Through our coaching partnership, I've been able to support her in contacting experts, guiding students to explore the driving question through multiple perspectives, and identifying safe and responsible resources for student research on homelessness. I am grateful for the opportunity to support teachers in this meaningful work. The complexity of project design and implementation requires a thoughtful combination of professional development and sustained coaching to ensure success for both teachers and students.
All right. We're fortunate to be able to send our staff to powerful learning conferences put on by dynamic institutions. As I mentioned before, in June, we were able to take our cohort of teachers and two principals to the PBL World Conference, which is a professional development conference put on by PBL Works, which is a branded entity of the Buck Institute of Education, and they have long been an influential partner to the district in our design and facilitation training. And in March, we took the team to Deeper Learning Conference put on by High Tech High, which is a cutting-edge network of schools dedicated to deep learning competencies within the project-based culture. And here to share one beneficial outcome is instructional coach Sarah Rodriguez.
Hi, Sarah Rodriguez, Instructional Coach at Samo High and the PBL Pathway. And I want to share with you just one of many powerful conference sessions I attended at Deeper Learning Conference this year. One of the real challenges for PBL, and especially for teachers new to it, is the demands of planning, project planning. Not only do we need to have a sense, sort of broad sense of the overall project, but also a plan for the day-by-day, minute-to-minute choreography of that project. Well, guess what? There's an AI tool for that. So at one conference session, I was introduced to the developer of a free tool that will enable teachers to input a very brief sort of project seed idea, and this tool, within seconds, can output not only a sort of overview of a project, but also minute-to-minute plans for implementation, with everything from small group discussion questions to writing task prompts, to exhibition setup ideas, community partnership possibilities. This tool is going to be an invaluable asset for our teachers, and I can't wait to share it and help teachers navigate it in coaching sessions next year and beyond. Thanks so much.
Right. Now, I just want to say, it's not like we are saying, AI, do all of this for us. We do the deep training, and we make sure that they understand how to do it. But one of the things that we hear over and over and over again is, I don't have time. I don't have time, if I had time. So we create that time in each one of our sessions, and then to have a tool that is developed specifically for project-based design to help get those seed ideas organized, and then they can make those decisions, is a real game changer for teachers. So thank you, Sarah. All right. Grant and Smash teamed up this year to engage in some innovative teacher learning. Each school hosted a team from the other school to observe instruction and to reflect on practice. Grant will present to the board soon, where they will go into depth on the importance and the impact of this experience. So consider this, a preview of their work, and a little sample of the out-of-the-box approaches to teacher learning that our efforts strive to promote. Let's hear from Jessica Rish.
We know that learning happens best when there's interactive modeling, guided exploration, and where insights are mutually shared amongst peers. And we say that with child learners, and we know that's true with adult learners as well. So today, we are doing observations together, side by side, saying what we notice, what we wonder, celebrating, and answering, clarifying, and probing questions, and then we're really taking a look at, like, imagining possibilities, and what are the building blocks we each have in place and that we want to innovate and explore together next. So next up, we'll be heading to Grant.
And then now, from Dr. Steve Richardson.
resonates with kind of my opinion on leadership and developing staff. I think there's kind of some old thinking around, well, we'll, we'll work with each teacher one at a time and try to bring the best out of him. And I think what we know from research is, teachers bring the best out of each other. And so I really believe this model aligns with research around collective teacher efficacy. And, you know, quite honestly, teachers are better positioned to teach each other. They're doing the work, they're participating in the planning, the implementation, the reflection, the reimagining. And so to be able to kind of experience what's happening here at Smash, side by side, is a really powerful, powerful way that I would love to be, see scaled throughout the community.
So as you see, in project-based learning, it calls for us to ask questions, and when we start asking questions, we start doing things differently. And so this is a really, really innovative approach, and I agree with Dr. Richardson. I hope that we can do this more and more. I hope that we can do this more and more. The impact is great when we have time for it to take root. So big props to our Malibu schools for their continued resilience despite so many closure days due to extreme circumstances this year. We especially salute Webster for carrying forward despite changes in leadership over the recent years. And so this photo collage that you see, I know it might be hard to see each picture, but we got this from the principal of Webster, Karina Diana. And the photo collage shows classrooms coming alive during this year's open house. Students proudly showcased their learning journeys. Highlights included California landmarks, Rube Goldberg machines, geometric cities, animal adaptations, a Mars mission, and a vibrant cultural celebration through the food truck extravaganza and affirmations display. Students beamed with pride as they shared their work with their families, demonstrating not only what they learned, but how they applied it in creative and meaningful ways. So to remind the board, Webster teachers have long been immersed in project-based design through their work with Botswana. So here to share a little bit about that impact is instructional coach Meredith Majewski.
In today's dynamic educational landscape, authentic learning experiences and connections are essential. By incorporating PBL, our teachers create more than just meaningful, innovative projects. Over the years, we've made connections with field experts across the globe, around the United States, and right here within our local community. For example, students working on the Botswana School Project met regularly with a safari business owner in Africa who shared the importance of conservation via Zoom. He also connected us with students from Motopee. Students from both locations, Motopee and Malibu, interviewed each other via Starlink. We look forward to this continued work next year. A class learning about marine science in Kelp had the mentorship of an OC marine biologist expert. Students were highly engaged as she shared current projects and answered their inquiry questions about sustainable farming. Then students teamed up with our middle school science students who listened to their conservation PSA pitches, a timely interaction, both beneficial and fun. It's exciting to celebrate the rich resources we have within our school families as well. Getting to know our parents and greater school community has given us access to a bounty of resources that enhance projects, including a local parent and chef who visited and helped students invent a Kelp-based smoothie, also a pollinator advocate who worked with a class to reimagine their entire back patio learning area. Making connections and incorporating field experts and mentors builds an ever-growing bank of invaluable resources for in-person and/or televisits. This innovative, thoughtful approach transforms classroom into launchpads for real-world inquiry and impact far beyond our school walls.
Thank you, Meredith. Go on to the next slide. District-wide growth mindsets are developing around project-based approaches. So our work with Grant teachers serves as a roadmap since they were the first-year pilot for our current training model. The picture on the left shows a community expert and social experience designer sharing her knowledge about small living spaces for the Grant Fourth Grade Tiny Homes Project. And it represents the increase of experts and real-world connections that are leveraged through teacher-designed PBL units and facilitation. Now, the photo on the right shows summer school students involved in PBL. Here, students learn the basics of making games through hands-on activities, which allowed them to practice collaboration, communication, creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving. And students designed and produced their own game in partnerships or in groups of three. It represents Ed Services' commitment to boost innovation and student engagement in all instructional settings. Moreover, we should know that when PBL is designed and facilitated at the gold standard level, learning is achieved at the deeper depth of knowledge levels of three and four. Tasks such as critiquing, revising, assessing, constructing, reasoning, creating, designing, connecting, planning, and making real-world applications are consistent touchpoints within project-based learning. The instructional impact includes rethinking our environments. Smash demonstrates the power of innovation, not only in the instructional design, but also in the culminating product or the project. So as highlighted in the superintendent's direct district priorities update, which was on March 13th, the picture on the right recalls how CTE Academy space was used to help bring more real-world connection to Smash's Project Fairy Tales on Trial. What it also demonstrates is the innovation of elementary students engaging in learning on a high school campus, providing a glimpse down possible future pathways. So the video here that I'm going to play is an interview with a parent who has just emerged from a parent-student social-emotional learning activity which happened at Smash. And this allowed parents to be part of their child's learning experience at school.
As a parent, I spend a lot of time getting on the floor and rolling around with my kids and being playful. And at school, I sometimes feel like I'm super buttoned up when I come to back-to-school nights or parent-teacher conferences. I'm the grown-up version of me. And it was fun and gratifying to get to, you know, roll around here too and get to be my kid, you know, the kid that's inside of me.
Fantastic. Well, now I'm going to switch to just sharing a little bit about our PBL Secondary Pathway, PBL Pathway at Samo High. So this shows the yearly project focus for students that are involved in that pathway. So ninth graders focus on service learning, and like all Samo High freshmen, the freshman seminar. Tenth graders begin to design projects based on the needs of others. Their learning is often experiential and leveraged by mentors, and they begin their self-selected internships. Then when they get into 11th grade, they deepen their interest-driven learning experiences with a tighter focus on industry-specific skill development. And then finally, in 12th grade, they construct complex projects with their professional network, and they begin to plan for secondary life. The Samo High Pathway is winding down its fifth year and its first year on the Samo High campus. So the program continues to provide a student-interest-driven, project-based approach, where students work collaboratively to address real-world problems that matter most to them. Students take coursework to prepare them for interest-driven internships. And the leaving-to-learn opportunities that they have there are also leveraged to provide vibrant and engaging opportunities to deepen students' content knowledge. Want to share a video that the students put together for you?
Hello, my name is Fatima Nomashobi, and I'm a senior here at Samo High's project-based learning pathway. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share a little highlights about our program. For starters, we moved from Santa Monica College to this wonderful campus at Samo High into the business building. And thanks to the move, we've had an expansion of the iStudio, which is a maker space where students can come, learn, create, and explore different passions that they have in and out of the classroom.
Our school year launched with a powerful, all-grade-level project called Get Out the Vote, an integrated civic action initiative that raised community awareness about the value of voting, especially among young and first-time voters. And that was just the beginning. This year, PBL students showcased their learning across a range of dynamic exhibitions. In Let's Play, students pitched and created prototypes of their own designs for an updated Virginia Avenue Park Playground to Santa Monica Park's and Recreation Design Team. In history class, students memorized significant moments in world and US history through powerful projects and exhibitions. For our 10th and 11th graders, one of their interdisciplinary projects taught eighth graders about DNA and tackled the ethical dilemmas of genetic modification, bringing complex scientific issues into real-world conversations. Now, our seniors are preparing for their culminating experience, PBL X-Tops, an individual showcase where they present their senior thesis projects to the broader community. What makes PBL truly unique is how we focus on individual passions and personalized learning. Our freshman class embraced service learning this year, partnering with West LA Animal Shelter and Best Friends LA. And in the spring, they dove into career exploration, learning cold-calling and interview skills, all while taking a counseling 12 college class through SMC as ninth graders. Our sophomores are sharpening their talents too, even building a recording studio in one of our classrooms, working side by side with a professional music composer. This year, more than ever, we've bridged school and the real world. Eighty percent of our seniors and fifty percent of our juniors are working closely with adult mentors outside in their fields of interest. Our goal is 100% mentorship for grades 10 through 12.
This year, I will be graduating. So unfortunately, I won't be here in the fall. However, thanks to our recruitment process of doing information sessions, on-campus tours, and going to district middle schools and teaching them about what PBL is, we will be expanding our freshman incoming class to double the size. And we even have a waitlist. So thanks for this year of doing, learning.
Thriving.
Look forward to next year.
Do, learn, thrive. All right. Well, I want to wrap us up with just sharing what our implementation plan is moving forward in terms of the training and keeping that momentum going. With the success of the Year One training, we determined the need to provide a clear three-year roadmap for sites. And each year has a themed focus. So the first year is about building foundational understandings of what PBL is, why it's important, and how to design and facilitate PBL units. Year Two is about expanding on that foundation to be able to shift from teacher learning to student learning. And then for Year Three, it's about deepening that whole design and instruction and fortifying that practice. So this chart helps us to communicate to sites so that they understand and plan for those elements along the side on the far left of design and facilitation, capacity building, project expectation, depth and complexity targets, teacher development focus, and targets for project demonstration or exhibitions, and then expectations for contributing to a district-wide lesson bank. So we're also finalizing a rubric so that sites, grade levels, admin can gauge where they're at at any given time on their professional practice and the capacity related to PBL. So I do thank you so much. Hopefully, you got a chance to see how broad it's gotten. I'm really, really, really proud of the efforts of so many others. And it's really exciting to see, not just it take off, but how it's coming together with CTE as well. So thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton.
I just want to say thank you so much for just embodying the vision. We know that you work so hard. And I know you having to do those trainings were great. But as you said, and I want to say, it's important that our entire school have those focuses so that the work can actually be done. I wish Jessica was speaking much louder because they are the example of how this thing actually works. You have a project-based learning school, which maybe you didn't hear that. A project-based learning school working side by side with Grant, which is trying to become some element of the project base and are doing some of the work where they are sharing the professional development with each other. So the teachers are working together to get the work done. And then to hear Adam speak tonight about continuing, and this is, this makes, I know it sounds, this is the exciting information that's being shared, how people are overlapping. So that means that the work is getting done. That means that we're speaking a common language. Thank you to the Ed Services Department and Finance for making sure that we have the money to do this stuff. But, and the board, that's okay with us taking these opportunities to make something great for our kids. So I just want to say thank you so much to all of you because as we speak this common language and as we begin to stretch people, and that's what's happening. And I'm thankful for our teachers who are willing to be stretched, to do the work, specifically the examples that we've seen tonight across the district at Webster. And that's an example of leadership change, work still being done.
Right.
And I want you all to just, leadership change, work still being done, despite us being here. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Shelton. Yes.
Just piggyback on that for one second.
We're going to go right down the row, okay? I see it all.
And just go back to Devon for one second and dwell on, it's so valuable that you've been in on this from the ground floor and the continuity that you bring to it. And so then can plug in with Jessica, who was there before, doing this with somebody new and everywhere along the way. So I just want to say how much I think we all value your, everything you've done and continue to do. And so when you present year to year also, or month to month, the growth that you see and are getting to live through and what we were talking about in the hallway is just priceless. I mean, we're just, we're lucky to have you. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Pretty grateful myself. Thank you.
No, I think we've gone through a long way, especially for myself. That we were here when Dr. Droudi first, you know, set this off. And many of us got to go to, you know, what is it? High Tech High in Chula Vista and seeing it, you know, happening there and how we thought, myself thinking, like, how are we going to get there? You know? And thanks to you, because I know, Devon, you weren't like all there at the very, but you've learned along the way, and you've built this. You know, I think you saw a clear hand, you know, you saw a clear vision and understand that this is really, for me, I see it as a future of education. Where no longer, if, you know, as we now develop the new classrooms, we're no longer going to be, you know, sitting in rows, but we're going to be moving tables, moving chairs, moving all over the place in the classroom and learning. And I think this is great. And I'm hoping that the teachers will come on board as they realize that the students learn more in these processes rather than being lectured to for an hour. So thank you so much. I think I'm willing, you know, I'm excited, especially because I get to work with you and the other part of it, you know, at the community college and doing, you know, career education and career pathways, dual enrollment. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Devon, Dr. Devon, thank you so much. I will echo what everyone else and the accolades and the appreciation and gratitude to you. Some things have struck me as we sit here this evening. This is the first time I've been back on the dais here in Malibu since prior to COVID. I missed the last meeting. But I remember well, as I'm sure my colleagues who were on the dais, when we had a big meeting here in Malibu with Jessica Rish and all of the folks from Smash as we were debating whether or not to expand Smash to a high school. It was one of, it was a really incredible, deliberative, thoughtful, and genuine moment in our community where we were engaging on how to best provide an expansion of project-based learning experience. Right, we flirted with so many ways to describe what kind of outcomes we were hoping to get. Maria was keeping us on task with the 21st century. Now look how far we are into the 21st century. So I just want to do a shout-out to the board. When we talk, when Dr. Shelton, who was, I think, I don't even know if Dr. Shelton was first employed at the time that we had the first conversations with the district. Were you, maybe, maybe not? Thank you very much, just right away. Yes. So why was I mentioning that? Because of what Dr. Shelton said with regards to the continuity of leadership. And so then when we hear the Dr. Droudi and now Dr. Shelton, and I just touring the new Malibu High School campus this earlier afternoon, after all of us experiencing the new facilities at Santa Monica High School with regards to the maker spaces. And I was saying to, I think, Gail and others as we were driving up that it's rare that we are able to, and to Alicia, to engage in the joy of education, the joy of learning, and actually feel like we've been a part of some big thing, some big project. That when I think there's so much anxiety and sadness around where humanity is going in this republic, but here in the Republic of California, in the County of Los Angeles, in the District, Malibu, Santa Monica, Santa Monica, Malibu, we have done something incredibly special. And that is in good measure to your leadership and to all those who have supported you in what we're doing. So it's a joyful moment. What I would say is a couple of things, and I'll take my answers offline. So I'm just going to spit them out. One, what the heck is that airplane picture? One, what the heck is that airplane picture with that kid flying an airplane? I can't even get my 22-year-old to drive a car, but we've got Santa Monica, Malibu High School kids flying airplanes. That's one. I was gonna ask you specifically also to say something about what I think is a buried headline in that last video. Not that that couch is pretty groovy. How did we get that couch at San Ohai? Did you notice that couch? But, what the student, what she said, what they said about the incoming freshman class. Because I think that this board has been, and this is where I want us all to pat ourselves on the back, because one thing that this board did not do, and I don't suspect it has any intention of doing, is a retreat in the expansion and the commitment to project-based learning. So where you articulate it at the beginning of your presentation, the rotation, when we talk about the isolation that we once saw teachers experiencing in getting to the place where they could implement or integrate kind of this incredible tool for teaching, we've all stuck with it. And there, as we know, has been incredible pressure on this. And so, many instances, there were questions about, you know, well, how many kids are being served there, et cetera. And so that's a headline, Dr. Devon Smith and Dr. Shelton. We should be singing the praises of like, of moving to Santa Monica High School campus. We should be talking about what it's going to mean for this new Malibu High School campus that's gonna open many months ahead of schedule. So I just want to say, I'm very excited, you can tell. Congratulate Dr. Shelton, you and your entire team. I want to thank my peers on the board, both those who were here at the beginning and those who are here now by way of standing by the project, because we know that, what do we say, slow and steady wins the race? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alicia?
Yes, I...
I'm sorry, can I just want the airplane?
He wants answers.
I just want to know about the airplane.
Now I want to know more about the airplane. I'll have to ask, I will actually email you.
Oh, okay. Because I thought, oh my gosh, are we doing some sort of partnership with the Santa Monica Airport? I didn't know what that, that was an airplane, right?
Yes, that was an airplane. In the air.
What'd you say?
Yes, yes, and I want to echo, I think we've already said a lot of things. And to me, I will, I've been to the schools and I've seen PBL in action. And I was, I was talking here with my colleague and saying like, you know, the presentation doesn't do its service because it's been some of the most exciting work that I've seen on the ground. I remember coming to Webster a couple of years ago and coming with Maria Leon Vazquez and Jennifer Smith and meeting Stacy Rouse here and seeing the open house. And I remember vividly having second graders talk about their project, which it was a zoo, and you get to see how they're incorporating the standards and learning, but doing it in a way that is so exciting. And I think when we have issues like chronic absenteeism and student disengagement, it's like, how do we get our students excited? And, you know, kind of getting students to eat the vegetable, right? Getting them to eat the broccoli to, and do it in a fun way anyways. But some of the most exciting things have been PBL at Grant Elementary, too, being able to see where it started and how far it's come along. Also at Smash, I remember doing the, my very first tour of Smash and seeing what was happening in the classrooms. And again, having kids being excited to be in school and to, and not scared to talk to adults about what they're working on. To me, that's the type of work that we should be doing. And I think everything else, like the math skills, everything else will come along if our kids are excited to be there. And so I also want to thank our, I know that our teachers, you said, those numbers are amazing to have 100 teachers being trained in a year. And I know that we have our amazing instructional coaches and that you lead all of this work. I thank you for doing all of that, and I want to say that I continue, I want to continue supporting this work. And, yes, and so that's, it's not really, oh, and I wanted to ask about the civic engagement. Is the student at PBL, will she be getting the seal of civic engagement on her diploma? I know that's another really newer thing that is happening, but if not, I would suggest that that she contact, I think it's Erin Hill, whoever sees it.
I will get that information, and I will put that in email or a memo.
Yes, because I love to celebrate, you know, it's a lot of work getting a project like that going. Anyways, thank you for everything that you do.
Haley, did you want to chime in, or should we let Stacy go? Which one? Okay.
I kind of just wanted to say, I think it's amazing that you're connecting with elementary school kids because I wish I had that opportunity. I feel like it would have helped me find what kind of path I wanted to go into when I was younger, so I think it's amazing that you're doing that. And I've seen so much work that you're doing now. Just want to say thank you so much because I know a bunch of students are very much appreciative of what you're doing.
Thank you.
Stacy, yeah?
First, I have a clarifying question on your three-year implementation plan. You don't need to pull it back up. I just want you to know what I'm referring to. So, I love that you said you learned this year and you thought there needed to be three-year implementation. So that is out of the transformative approaches, right, and everybody doing theirs? So after doing it this first year, you're now realizing that you have this. So with your year one, you'll do year two for them, and then as the next group comes in, that's where that is, right?
Correct, correct. And, you know, for us, we're learning as we are doing as well. And I think the realization was, we are passing this knowledge on. We're helping to help teachers understand how to design and how to facilitate. Then we realized they need more time, just like a teacher goes through teacher education programs. That doesn't mean that they're comfortable until a few years down the road. And so this gives us time to build that capacity and deepen it so that they don't get discouraged and think that they can't do it. So we want them to really, really take root with the approach. And I think that's where, when the leadership changes happen, it's not dependent on the principle. Yeah. So, that's what we learned, and that's what we're trying to do right now.
Well, I want to say I really love this because I think there's always that conflict of how soon do you start something, how complete does it need to be? We need to go in aware and with a plan, but to wait until something is perfect, we'll never do anything. But that's different than just driving in. But then, one of my favorite things is thinking about things as an iterative process. And I think this is a great example of what that looks like and getting feedback along the way, all the way through. You know, for kids to say how they're experiencing it, for teachers and aides to tell how they're experiencing site leadership up into like the Ed Services Department. And if that conversation leads to things like this, and then tweaking it as you go, that's how we really learn, that's how we really perfect things, and how we get out of that mindset of there is a right way to do it, and if it didn't work, then we need to give up. Because, you know, the Nogera report in 2016 talked about not doing things long enough and seeing it through and giving up too quickly. And I think that process is really difficult when you have a lot of scrutiny, when you're not sure where things are going. And I just think this is so crucial because it allows you to say what is working, what isn't, and without scrapping everything, keep going in. So I really like that you came up with this and you're sharing what it's doing. So thank you. And then I also want to say, not just on this, but broader, that people are, you know, it's been set up here how exciting this is and how we like it. And I think this again is an example where there's not just a vision statement, and it's not just something written on paper, but this is actually being driven forward because there is an overall plan. And Dr. Shelton, that happening, and it's being engaged at every level. There's drivers all the way through. It's not just bottom up, it's not just top down, and it's not just middle out. And it really is giving our student voice. And I think that is actually, it's important for, like, if we're in the board, not to just drop something. But the board doesn't do the work. You know, we have a role and we're important, but we don't do the work. And none of us does the work alone. And so to bring in the teachers, bring in the kids, bring in administration. I just think this is really important. And the last thing I'll say is, I really love, in the learning, when I went to Smash, kids were working with power tools in second, third grade. I was so jealous because I got to do that at home with my dad in the garage, but not at school until middle school. And now at a lot of middle schools, you can't even do that. So I love that we're unsanitizing school and we're making it real world. And then the other piece that I'm really excited about is this process, like at Webster and other places, is it normalizes, you were talking about getting feedback from adults and being willing to talk to adults. When they do this in their groups, a lot of people hate group projects because they are so difficult and you get so upset that people don't think the way you do, or they're not working the same way. And this, I think, really normalizes that it is okay to learn to express yourself. It's okay to have your understanding, your approach, and your opinion. But also, it's okay that other people have their own opinions and approaches, and that it's okay to disagree, and it's okay to work through it, and you can get to a solution that maybe none of you saw. And I think we struggle with that as adults. And so to see our kids doing that, and we teach them that they can do it, that it's normal, and it's important. So, I'm just, I really love that they're getting that process.
Thank you.
Wow, well, I really, thank you, everybody. I just don't know what I could add to all of that because really, I just thank you very much. Thank you for the vision, continuing the vision, and all the work that's gone into it. Thank you so much, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our communications section. We're gonna have first our student board member from Santa Monica High School, Haley.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and fellow SMUSD community members. I'd like to share that we recently hosted a successful blood drive on April 24th, organized by our Community Service Committee in partnership with UCLA. I'm proud to say that we met our donation goal thanks to the incredible participation from students. This year was our first time hosting the Detask Drama Teachers Association of Southern California Festival on April 26. Students performed Shakespeare scenes and competed across all categories all over campus. Another event on campus was our NASA event in Barnum Hall on April 29. Johnny Kim answered pre-recorded science, technology, engineering, and mathematic-related questions about the International Space Station. The event was hosted in Barnum Hall at Santa Monica High School, and it included students from Roosevelt Elementary and Lincoln Middle School. The very next day, April 30, we welcomed our families for our final parent tour of the school year. Today is May 1st, National College Decision Day, also known as Commit Day. So many high school seniors who plan to attend college make their final choice today. Super exciting. Y'all West, our annual book festival is on May 3rd, and ASB students are volunteering and selling drinks at the event. AP exams begin next week. First one is on May 5th, and many students are preparing for AP testing. Many are feeling stressed and overwhelmed, especially seniors experiencing their final months at San Ohai. Yesterday, we recognized Denim Day in support of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And ASB is actively working on events for Cinco de Mayo and Jewish American Heritage Month, collaborating with clubs across campus. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and we'll be offering wellness activities throughout, like sound baths, art therapy, and more. One of the biggest events will be our Health and Wellness Fair on May 22, which will include resources, hands-on activities, and my personal favorite, therapy dogs. To end on an exciting note, ASB TV is officially in production. ASB is working hard to bring engaging, student-led content to life on screen. And that concludes my update. Thank you so much for your attention and time this evening.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Ella from Malibu High School.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, board members. Here are some events that have been going on at our school. Right before spring break, ASB held our annual ASB election and discovered our upcoming ASB class leaders, ASB and class leaders for next year's school year. Last week, Malibu High held an art show featuring all high school student art classes as well as middle school. Recently, Malibu High has been prepping for this week's Spirit Week, our last and final one of the year. Our class settled on the theme of Festival Week in honor of the recent festivals. Monday, Coachella, dress and boho chic wear. Tuesday, a stagecoach. Cowboy and cowgirl wear. Wednesday, rave, neon and EDM outfits. Thursday, rock, and you wear rock and roll outfits with band tees. And tomorrow, Friday, the usual class colors. Tomorrow, we will hold our last pep rally, the Moving Up Rally. The name comes from the, sorry, excuse me. The name comes from the tradition we do at the end of the last rally, where the seniors exit the gym and each grade moves up to their new section to take a picture as a way of transitioning into the upcoming year. ASB has been working hard to pick games, decorate, and make a script for the rally. We will do things like guess the lyric, sports team walkouts, dance team performance, senior recap video, and a special surprise for the seniors at the end. Yesterday, on April 30, and all week, our school spread awareness for Denim Day. People used old jeans and painted them with important facts or sayings about Denim Day. They were hung around school as a way of spreading awareness. In honor of this week, our, in honor of this week on morning announcements, Tara, our ASB president, told the backstory of Denim Day and how it became, what it became in the name. This week, our high school theater is putting on the production of Addams Family today through Sunday. Like Haley said, we've been prepping for AP exams, so a lot of teachers have been working hard on that. It's been a chaotic time at Malibu, but everyone's pushing through. As well as portfolios have been due, so all of our creative team has been doing, like creative team in classes have been working hard on that as well. And that pretty much wraps it up for what's happening at Malibu. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you. So much going on. Amazing. Is Claudia available? Nope. Okay. And Nicole? Okay. Okay. Yeah, is Nicole Ferris, PTA Council President?
Liz Calgill is actually filling in for...
There's Sarah. Okay. Let's do Liz. Okay. Hi, Liz.
Hi, everybody. Esteemed board members, Superintendent Shelton, and Executive Cabinet. You've got me tonight. I'm Liz Calgill, Vice President of SMMCTA, our teachers' union, and here's our report. If I can see it.
One second, Liz. We're gonna pull up the presentation.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Next slide. Cool. Well, Happy May Day, which is International Workers' Day. Today, we honor the legacy of the 1886 Haymarket Affair in Chicago, where many of our union siblings lost their lives fighting for something we now consider a basic right, the eight-hour workday. It is both sobering and inspiring to remember that people had to make the ultimate sacrifice to secure the rights we enjoy today. And still today, union members across the country continue to raise their voices for fair wages, safe working conditions, and the right to remain in this country. Next slide, please. May is also a time for celebration. We recognize mental health. I don't know where my Mental Health Awareness Day went to. Oh, well. Mental Health Awareness Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, and Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. There are so many activities on our campuses, including, on my campus, tomorrow, a Mental Health Awareness Month celebration spearheaded by our mental health counselor, Ms. Nancy Gutierrez. Next slide. I don't know why that's not showing. Weird. Okay. "In the spirit of mental health awareness, I encourage all of us to keep a close eye on our children as we enter the season of high-stakes testing. Let's remember that our kids watch how we respond to these pressures, and they feel it too. They don't want to disappoint us, but we must remember, they have already endured so much. The January fires left lasting scars not only on the landscape of our city, but on our collective mental health. For many of us, just the scent of smoke can bring the trauma flooding back. And parents, please be gentle with your children. Remind them that test scores do not define who they are. These exams are only snapshots, brief glimpses of what a student may recall in a particular..." brief glimpses of what a student may recall at a particular moment. Your words and actions carry tremendous weight. If your children know you, love and accept them as they are, they will believe in themselves and do their best. Next slide. Yeah, I don't know why that's not showing. Okay. Teachers, please extend that same kindness to yourself. Stay hydrated, get rest, and remember, you made it through one of the toughest semesters we've ever experienced. The children are doing well because of you. Their test scores are just one data point in a year filled with joy, growth, resilience, and healing. You guided them through a storm, and they are stronger because of your care. As we begin to end this school year, take a moment to celebrate all that we've accomplished. Recognize the small victories as much as the large ones. Next slide. Oh, excellent. Next week is Teacher, National Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to thank my colleagues, the ones who took on extra commuting this year just to be present for their students, the ones who stayed after school and worked weekends to prepare lessons and grade papers. To our high school teachers and advisors, thank you for the hundreds of recommendation letters you wrote to help students pursue their dreams. You are the silent heroes, often sacrificing time with your own families to lift up the families of others. Your work is seen, and it is deeply appreciated. Next slide. Ooh, this is a fun one. Finally, I invite all of you to join us for our Union's Day of Action on May 17. We're organizing to fight back against federal attacks on our schools. The stakes are high. $1,832 in federal funding per student is on the line. 9% of all public school funding is at risk. $9.8 billion, with a B, dollars is in total federal K through 8 education dollars could be lost, and 87,438 school staff positions are currently supported with federal funds. Local and state tax revenue would need to rise by 10% to make up the difference. So what are we going to do? We will gather at SpaceX in Hawthorne at 11:00 AM on the corner of Crenshaw Boulevard and Jack Northrop Avenue. We're calling on our federal government to provide fair and equitable funding for our public schools, and we hope you will stand with us. Next slide. Hey, I'm done. Thank you so much for listening, and let's have a great rest of the school year.
Thank you, Liz. I liked it. Is Nicole with us on Zoom?
I do not see her.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so that, I believe that will be the end of communications. Dr. Shelton?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say I had a meeting today, which was a lot of fun, and also had an opportunity to be with the Malibu Education Foundation, Karen and Al Harden and several others, just to get together to focus on what we need to do as we move forward. And I was happy to be here. I was already here because we had the eighth-grade exit interviews, which was a lot of fun to talk to eighth graders as they moved to high school. And then I had a tour today with board members and those members of the Malibu Education Foundation, of the new Malibu High School, which you have something in store for you when you began to go to Malibu High School. I also want to say, recognize its National School Principals' Day, which is today, as Liz already mentioned, which is May Day, Silver Star Service Banner Day. I just wanted to make sure everybody know that without the principals, a lot of the work that we're talking about today and this evening would not be done. For those of us who have been principals, we know that is the toughest job in our school district, is to be a site school principal, to ensure that everything and the day-to-day operations are done. So we honor our school principals today. Update on our Ocean Park Neighborhood School. I wanted to just share, I know some of our community has had some concerns, but I wanted to make sure people were aware of several things. A neighborhood school previously housing John Muir Elementary School and SMASH is being developed for the Ocean Park Neighborhood. The new neighborhood school is evolving and expanding, and will be project-based learning and social-emotional learning-focused. The campus construction is scheduled to be completed by the end of November, and will be followed by installation of furniture and fixtures with anticipated reopening scheduled for the spring of 2026 for staff and students. The school will feature a unique identity with a new name and branding, with further information provided in the upcoming months. The new neighborhood school will add two transitional kindergarten classrooms and add one additional kindergarten classroom, with the school serving TK through eighth-grade students. The school will continue to expand in future years with the plan of having two classes serving each grade level at full capacity. It is our hope to have a full-capacity school. Students currently enrolled in SMASH will continue at the Obama Center campus until the reopening of the new campus. If you are in the Ocean Park Neighborhood with an incoming TK or Kinder student, we welcome you to enroll at SMASH for the 25-26 school year, to transition to the new campus with classmates and same teachers when it reopens during the school year. We look forward to joining us, we look forward to you joining us. Olympic High School will remain at Santa Monica College for the fall semester, and will return to the Obama Center following the reopening of the Ocean Park Neighborhood School. And I wanted to make sure everyone knows, when the school is completed, we will move the students from the Barack Obama Center to the Ocean Park School. CASBO, we just came back a couple of weeks ago, nearly 40 SMMUSD employees from the Business and Fiscal Services Department recently attended the California Association of School Business Officials Annual Conference, California's leading organization advancing excellence in school business operation. Ongoing professional development is essential for all of our staff. And I want you to know, it is a proud moment to see our staff all together. Gerardo took a picture of all of our staff receiving professional development and using these tools that are needed throughout the year to support the operation of our entire school community. And I want to say thank you for supporting our efforts to ensure that PD is provided to whether you are classified, but also certificated staff. So we value both our staff, whether it's classified or certificated. Yesterday, I think it was yesterday, this week is going, the second graders in Gabriela Mercias' class at Grand Elementary recently worked on a project-based learning project where they identified and interviewed someone who makes a difference in their community, and they chose me as one of their changemakers. I had so much fun sitting with the kids and them asking, I think it was 15 or 16 questions, and you know, they have five or six. And you know one thing they said? Don't be jealous. I said, I was 49, and they were like, oh, my God, you look 24. So I just wanted to throw that, just had to throw that. It made me feel so good. I gave that kid a big old hug. But it was really nice, because what I wanted to say, you know, I had to share that. But I also had to share the fact that having our teachers embrace what we're talking about this evening, and what Dr. Smith has shared, and seeing it, and then being invited to the class, to see the work being executed. Horrible word I just used, but being actually done in the classroom is pretty awesome. And I just commend our teachers for stepping outside of their comfort zone, but making it possible for our kids to explore and actually talk to the individuals. Our city has been great partners. Our kids are at City Hall. When we're not just talking about government, our kids are going to City Hall. They're seeing City Hall and what happens at City Hall in elementary school. They're seeing jobs and opportunities, as Devon has shared. And that's what this is all about. Richard Marchini will be receiving an email from the kids and letters about lunch, because they want more fruit in the cafeteria. So I did share with them his email address. So I shared that with Richard yesterday. But it was a wonderful event, and I want our teachers to keep inviting me. Upcoming events will be, if you haven't looked at your Wave newsletter, please take a look at the newsletter. We have so many things going on. Malibu High School students will present the Addams Family tomorrow night throughout the weekend. Y'all West Book Festival returns to San Mo High on Saturday and Sunday. And May 7, our Local Control and Accountability Plan Meeting will be on Zoom from 5 to 7. We want your input. And May 17, two events are happening. The Parent Academy, Empowering Families to Empower Students, at Lincoln Middle School, 8 to 3. And also, we'll be discussing 504 plans versus IEPs, social-emotional support. This is a free event for our community. All families are encouraged to attend and engage with our district partners. Mexico, Majico, say it again?
Mahico.
Mahico, Mexico, Mahico. A folklorico dance and mariachi music festival will be held at Barnum Hall from 2 to 9:30. The event will feature youth mariachi and folklorico dance groups from SMMUSD and across the Western United States. We encourage families to participate, celebrate student talent, and engage in meaningful conversations that support our schools and community. I just want to reiterate, these opportunities have been shared with our families, whether it's on email or on our website, social media. We need your support. We need you to support our kids, so please come out to any of these events. I will be out tomorrow night. I know Gerardo will be out tomorrow night. I think Gerardo will be here. Doug will be out. So staff is out and about, making sure. And we want to also thank the Boys and Girls Club for their brunch last Saturday. Several of you, board members, were there in support. Jen, Lori, Maria, all were there, and my staff. I appreciate you all being there and making me realize I need to be right there, Gail, for the text message. Y'all know my Saturday morning, how I like it. And then also, on Sunday, we had two events that were a lot of fun, where the scoreboard was dedicated, and Jen was there, Gerardo was there. The Kiwanis donated a beautiful scoreboard in two of our parks. And also, last thing, was the party. Put on, Jen, the PTA at San Mo High for Grad Night, put on a nice live band. If you were there, you paid your $30, you got to see me drop it like it was hot. But we had a great time. Jen was dancing, I was dancing, Gerardo, and Gail couldn't get off the dance floor. So we had a wonderful time celebrating and just being around our community at the little party with the family. I call it the family band, because they belong to the Santa Monica community. So thank you all so much for giving me this opportunity just to share how wonderful our district is and what's going on.
Oh, thank you so much.
And the wine auction is Sunday at 4 o'clock.
Right.
I have to be there at 3, but 4 o'clock.
Right. Maria, did you want to?
No, I just wanted to mention that the Mexico, Mahico event on May 17th is free, but you just have to let them know that you're an SMMUSD family or student. Yeah, so it's free for us. Because I know there's other, the others--
Donations requested.
Oh, donations requested, but--
Right, right. Okay. Amazing. Thank you. And we really, it really does feel like a family here. Thank you so much, all the staff, for supporting so many things and spending your time with us, because, you know--
Because you don't have--
Because you don't have to, and it's above, you know, it's way above, you know--
Even Kara's letting in.
Yeah, oh, yeah, even Mr. Upton was there too, celebrating with Grad Night. So I know-- Oh, Richard, go ahead.
I just don't know what the term "drop it like it's hot" means.
Want to explain that, Dr. Shelton? No, okay.
Oh, my God, Richard.
Yeah.
Did he mention the Johnny Kim thing?
Oh, no. Well, Haley mentioned the Johnny Kim thing, but, and Dr. Shelton was there. I was there too. It was amazing. I just, and I just have to say, it's, one of the things that I was thinking was how incredible our teachers are all throughout the district, because as you put it on stage, this is how we roll. We have two astronauts. That's how we roll. That unrelated, it's the only high, only school in the United States where there are two unrelated astronauts. So, but also, I mean, all the other amazing things that the students that come out of our district have accomplished, and just knowing, I mean, I hope the teachers in this coming week of teacher appreciation really feel and understand how much we appreciate them, and what, and the lives that they create, and the, and just the inspiration, and, and the, and what our kids get to do because of them.
And Jen, as, this is my last thing--
Yes.
Being Dr. Kim mentioning one of his teachers, who actually introduced him and talked about his teacher and the impact that the teacher had on him and the relationship, and when he was doing the steps for Flanders--
Right.
He was not thinking about, and I think that's a big thing when we do it, and what we are doing in school then relates to our drive and our will later in life, and that impact. So--
Absolutely.
We are appreciative of Catherine Baxter organizing and ensuring that we had this opportunity for all of the district to see this event.
Yeah, is there, did they tape it? Because I would say whoever wasn't there--
Yes, I want to say that it was, because my son and Edison, that's one of the highlights, he, he mentioned, I usually don't like to talk, but anyways, he was very excited and said, and told me all about it, and said, Mom, did you know them? And so they got to watch it. His fourth-grade class got to watch it.
Right. Well, we know it was streamed.
It was amazing, and it's not long, and if you can see it--
Yeah.
--for anyone who wasn't able to. It was--
It was streamed, yeah.
It was just, it was so inspirational to us as adults, let alone to these kids, being able to ask this guy, he was floated out of, up in the space capsule at the end. It was truly, and just the things he said, like Antonio was talking about, it was just, it was, it just felt so good in so many ways. It was really--
And, and that we had our TKers and kindergarteners from Roosevelt there, and the middle schoolers, and it was just--
And Sarah's daughter asked a question.
It was just adorable. It really was terrific. Okay, well, more to come. Okay, there's more of that. Okay, we'll move on to consent. Does anybody have any questions about consent or any issues? Maria moves consent. Lori seconds. We'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ella, if you're with us? Maybe you went off to study? Okay, and I'm a yes. Okay, now we are on to major action item. We have a lot of resolutions tonight. But first, Gerardo is going to do the Measure Our Parcel Tax.
Good evening, board and community. This is part of your annual approval of the parcel tax price increase, that every year increases by the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. The prior year for the, this fiscal year was $512.84. CPI this year increased about 3.3% or exactly 3.3%, moving your item for the parcel to $529.76 for the 25-26 parcel tax. And if you recall, you had your special board meeting on April 23rd approving, conducting your public hearing for your proposed annual parcel tax plan. And so in the schedule of timing, this is the next item that follows your public hearing, which is the Consumer Price Index levy against the parcel tax amount. So staff is recommending that you approve as presented.
Are there any questions? Maria moves it.
Second.
Richard seconds. So we'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia? Oh, she went, sorry, she, Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. And Alicia stepped out, so just so Sarah knows. We'll move on to major action item number two, Contract Amendment, Roosevelt Elementary School for the TK classrooms, presented by Carrie Upton. School for the TK Classrooms, presented by Carrie Upton.
I will get us going, but actually Steve Masetti, who's online, will do most of this. We're very excited about the Roosevelt Elementary School, the TK Classroom and Library Building Project. It is moving forward to begin this summer, and we had the CW Driver, who is the lease leaseback contractor, presented their bids and their guaranteed maximum price, and it came in. Well, I'll let Steve talk about it now. Steve, take it away.
You're about to take everything I have to say, Carrie. Pretty short one. So we had initially budgeted $30 million for construction for this project. Initial estimates came in higher than anticipated. Our design team and contractor worked on some value engineering. The contractor pushed pretty hard on a lot of their subs, and on bid day, we came in at a total of $30,400,000. So, a little more than 1% over our anticipated budget, but that does include a 5% project contingency within the project. So, we're pretty much on budget here, and we have certainly sufficient contingency within the overall project budget. So our recommendation is approval at the, at the requested amount in the agenda.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'll move the item.
Richard moves the item.
Second.
Lori seconds. No further discussion, we'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and Alicia still stepped out of the room. And then our third major action item, which is a second amendment to facility use lease agreement between Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District and Santa Monica Community College.
All right, Carrie Upton, Chief Operations Officer. As Dr. Shelton spoke earlier, we've been preparing and working on the Ocean Park Neighborhood School and getting it ready. It, it is taking a little longer than we anticipated, so it will not, so, so, we were hoping ready for August, but aren't we ready? Yes, Jen?
I'm so sorry, so, I was, I'm actually wondering if you could pause for a minute until Alicia comes back?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry to interrupt, but since Richard and Maria work at SMC, they're likely to abstain, and if we don't have Alicia here, we would not have quorum.
I was doing the similar accounting, but I didn't know what to do, so I just kept talking.
Okay, so I think we'll just, I think we'll just pause, yes, okay. So, okay.
Could we move to four? Can you, and then come back, or are we not allowed to do that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can just move down, go through some of the.
Shall we? Okay, we'll just move down then. Okay, so then, let's go to resolution for National Asian Pacific Islander, American Heritage Month.
I don't know that anyone's presenting these, but I guess I'll read the, be it resolved. So on this one, now therefore, be it resolved that during Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District joins with all Americans in celebrating this rich and diverse culture, and encourages all members of our community to recognize the important role of Asians and Pacific Islander Americans in creating and building this great nation. Be it further resolved that appropriate lessons and units of study about the contributions of Asians and Pacific Islander Americans take place in our schools, not only during this month, but throughout the school year.
So, move.
Richard moves. Stacy seconds, sorry. We'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Alicia, would you like to vote yes for?
Yes.
Okay, great, I mean, would you like to vote, not, would you like to vote yes? I did not mean that. I just know that you just stepped into the room, okay. So, that's all of us, okay. Should we, well, we, we, you know what, we paused while you were away, Alicia, because Carrie is presenting something that we thought you, that we would, that we needed you present for, for quorum. Okay, so we can go back to it, okay. But now, oh.
Hello again, Carrie Upton, Chief Operations Officer. I'm just saying that for John Keen, who always laughs. So, as, as Dr. Shelton spoke earlier, we are preparing the, I need to get my item back up. Okay, we are preparing the Ocean Park Neighborhood School for the return and the expansion that's going to happen there. We'd hoped to have it ready for this August. It is taking a little, little more time. It took more time to get through the Division of the State Architects' approval, but now it is moving, we have approval, we are moving, we're cooking, we're having it get going. You might see if you pass by there that the fences are about to come down on this DNC building, so you can see the outside, there's progress, but that does mean that we need to keep the SMASH program at the Obama Center for one more semester, and thereby, we need to keep the Olympic High School program at Santa Monica College for an additional semester. So, what this is, is, this is a, the second amendment to the facility use agreement between the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District and Santa Monica Community College District to extend the lease that we would, that we've already approved for the Olympic program to remain at their PICO campus, in the PICO spaces that we've already approved. So this would extend it for another six months for this second semester, for the first semester of the year, from July 1st to December 31st, at a cost of $206,000, which would be paid through our Madison campus. So they, they rent the Madison campus for us, so what we do is we deduct their, their rent on the Madison campus. This is how, this is the mechanism that we pay for it. But it'll be $206,000, and then we will be able to move out in December and move them back to the Obama Center in January, in January for the winter, for the spring semester.
Can I ask a quick question? Because I was thinking, it says in our item that it's paid through Measure SMS, so I'm wondering how the money flows.
Yes, so, since it is swing space as part of the project for the near SMASH water intrusion project, then the, we deduct the rent on the Madison campus, and then SMS backfills the general fund for that, for that amount.
Okay, that's a good explanation.
Yeah, there is a little pathway, but that was the way that the college wanted it, as opposed to just giving us, us giving them money and them, them giving us back money.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Okay, yes, Lori?
And I just want to confirm the text that I sent you earlier, the staff report is unintentionally misleading, I think, am I right? It says that we're going to extend the agreement for a year from its commencement, but it's really six months.
It, it really is six months, I, you know, I have to say.
Or a semester, or whatever.
I, I apologize. I got your text, and I looked at this like four times, trying to figure out what you were talking about, and at this moment, I just see it, and I just missed it, so yes.
I just wanted to make sure, because we don't have anybody online watching this or anything, but I wanted to make sure that, I did look at the agreement, the agreement's right, it doesn't say that, but it confused me, because I kept reading it over and over, and I'm like, what? And I knew that, because of the, being on the facilities committee, that you only meant six months of. I'm not doing this to call you out or anything, I just wanted to make sure there's no confusion anywhere, that it's six months, not a, not a year.
It is six months, and I can say that I now can see it, even though I was looking, I looked at it a few days ago, and it's going, I can't see what she's talking about, and I meant to connect with you, and I was looking at it.
It's a disease, being sort of this, like, always go to, my proofreader eyes just go to things like that.
Thank you for correcting.
Very good, okay, so, does anybody have any questions about, oh, Lori?
I'll move it.
Lori make, Lori moves the motion, Lori moves the item. Alicia seconds, take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
I'm abstaining as an employee of Santa Monica College.
Maria?
I'm also abstaining as, as an employee of Santa Monica College.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. There we go, thank you, Mr. Upton. Okay, so we'll move through our, our other resolutions, number five, major action item number five, Better Speech and Language Month.
So, be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education recognizes May as Better Hearing and Speech Month, and we encourage all citizens to recognize the achievements of audiologists, language speech specialists, and their assistants in improving the quality of life for students with communications disorders.
Okay, thank you, is there a motion? Stacy makes a motion, Maria seconds, take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
I'm a yes, thank you. And so we'll move on to Jewish American Heritage Month.
There are a lot of resolutions, May is a big month. Be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education recognizes May as Jewish American Heritage Month, and be it further resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education pays tribute to the many and varied contributions of the Jewish people to our school districts, states, and nation's story, and celebrate our common commitment to pluralism, cultural diversity, and religious freedom.
Can I make the motion? I'll make the motion. Anybody, Maria seconds. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, moving forward with National Mental Health Awareness Month.
Be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education recommits our educational community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our children, youth, and adults can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people, especially children and youth with mental health conditions, and approves the designation of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Great, Sarah, Alicia motions, there's seconds, Lori seconds, we'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And then, the next one is for the California Day of the Teacher. Lori, I think, might be a duet.
Doug wants, that's the one you want to speak to, right? Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening, Board and Community members. Staff recommends the adoption of Resolution 2457, California Day of the Teacher. This year, the California Day of the Teacher falls on May 14, 2025. We want to honor the incredible dedication, passion, and impact of our teachers. Each day, our educators show up with compassion and purpose, guiding, inspiring, and shaping the lives of our students. Their tireless commitment is nothing short of heroic. We are grateful not only for what they teach, but for how they care. On behalf of Dr. Shelton and the district, we extend our deepest appreciation to every teacher, past and present, for being the heart of our schools. Thank you for everything you do for students, families, and community.
You want to do the whereas, because?
Sure, and I'm going to, I'm going to insert what I'm calling the RTJ, RTJ amendment. Therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education does hereby urge the community to recognize Wednesday, May 14, 2025, as California Day of the Teacher by taking time to remember and honor those who instill the gift of knowledge and the joy of learning through teaching.
So we can make a motion with that, with that adjustment to it? Is that what we should do?
Yeah.
Okay, so Maria, you're making the motion with that addition of the joy of learning, is that what you said? Okay. All right, is there a second? Oh, Lori seconds, we'll do a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, great, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Mesa. Number nine is National School Nurses Day.
Be it resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere, and their efforts of meeting, I think it's to meet the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools, and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year.
Great, is there a motion? Maria makes a motion, Stacy seconds, do a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Fantastic, we get to appreciate all these people in one day. Yeah, so, number 11, Resolution 2460 is implementing certified layoff and reduction of services for certified employees. Dr. Mesa?
Yes, again, good evening. Staff recommends the adoption of Resolution 2460 to take final action to implement certified layoffs.
Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion? Maria makes a motion. Lori seconds, we'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Moving on to number 12, implementing classified layoffs and terminating services, I'm sorry, that's, that's where I am, right? Yes, of classified employees. Dr. Mesa?
Again, good evening. Staff recommends the adoption, the adoption of Resolution 2461 to take final action to implement classified layoffs.
Okay, any questions? Is there a motion? Stacy makes a motion? Lori second, Lori seconds, we'll take a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Number 13, approve senior management salary schedules per CalPERS per compliance.
Again, good evening. I'm going to speak to the both, the next two items together, just to provide some context. Staff recommends the approval of senior management salary schedules and Senior Management Employee Workbook for CalPERS. Some background information, during a recent review by CalPERS, the district was notified that our salary reporting for classified senior management employees is currently out of compliance with the Public Employer Retirement Law, or Pearl. This came to light after a senior management employee submitted their retirement paperwork, and CalPERS found that a border-proof contract alone does not meet Pearl's specific documentation requirements. To resolve this, we must develop and publicly approve a formal salary schedule for classified senior management positions. Additionally, we have created a senior manager, I'm sorry, Senior Management Workbook detailing all forms of additional compensation, such as bonuses and stipends. These two documents, once approved and published, will serve as a necessary agreement to comply with Pearl. CalPERS also recommends retroactive approval of schedules covering the duration of the retiring employee service to ensure full retirement credit. This is a critical step to ensure both compliance and the integrity of retirement benefits for our leadership staff. I want to emphasize that there are no changes to the current or past compensation of our senior management team. The implementation of the salary schedule and Senior Management Workbook does not alter any compensation amount. These documents are being developed solely to bring the district into compliance with CalPERS reporting requirements. The implementation of the salary schedule and senior management workbook does not alter any compensation amount. These documents are being developed solely to bring the district into compliance with CalPERS reporting requirements.
Thank you, Dr. Mesa. So can I just, just sort of clarifying, it, basically, we're creating schedules that, of information that already exists within our public sector to make it comprehensible and to obviously bring us into compliance with CalPERS and Pearl, that they require these schedules to be published and that, but none of the information is, all of the information has been published before and it's public, has been public before and that it is just set into these schedules in the workbook.
That is correct. That is correct. All the information was pulled from the contracts that were board approved previously.
Right, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Does anybody else have any clear questions or anything? Can we take these items together?
No, separate, please.
Okay, separate, okay. So. Is anybody, are we, do we need to, do we need to clarify anything more? Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to, to approve these salaries? Let's do the number 13, to approve the salary, the salary schedule. Did you say, Maria, you said moved? Okay, and Alicia seconds? And we'll take a roll call. Stacy? We'll do a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And so we'll take the second one for approval of classified senior management employee workbooks per CalPERS Pearl compliance. Is there a motion? Stacy makes a motion. Alicia seconds. Is that okay? Do a roll call. Stacy?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Wow, that was a lot of resolutions. We have in, I don't, don't see any information items. Maybe I'm wrong though, because I'm not online. No, I don't think so. Yeah. And general public comments? Do we have any general public comments?
No comments.
No comments. Okay. Any board member items? Yes, Richard?
Good evening, colleagues. I just wanted to report that the Subcommittee of the Santa Monica Malibu Board of Education will be on unification, will be meeting with two members, representatives of the City of Malibu's Committee on Unification, as was our direction and consensus when we last met at our last meeting and that'll take place on Tuesday. Just wanted to let folks know that as we had agreed that John Keen, Lori Lieberman and myself will engage with those two elected members on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Yes, Maria?
Yes, I just kind of want to reiterate the fact that the parent academy on May 17th, just to let you know that I will be making a presentation. So for any of the parents that have questions regarding dual enrollment, career pathways, the connections between, you know, the school district and SMC, so I'll be, I'll be there.
Thank you for doing that, Maria.
We need to let the parents know.
Yes, absolutely.
They always ask what isn't, so we're going to tell them.
Yes, fantastic.
Please take opportunity and come.
Yes, fantastic. Okay. District Advisory Committees, Board Member Comments, Future Item, Agenda Items and Adjournment. Oh, yes, go ahead, Alicia.